After five, I'll get started if you would please take a seat. And if we can get somebody to turn the music.
We go, um, yeah, forty-five minutes.
Hey, where's Miss Peabody?
Public comment, um.
Miss Peabody.
And, uh. I don't think we got many people.
You know, maybe we should have been a little bit more spread out.
Yeah, we might get shot.
But if they're saying the same thing over and over, it's the same thing.
Thank you for coming out. This time we'll call our meeting to order. And in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas will posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification. At this time, we'll have our invocation. If you would pray with me, please. Our most kind and precious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings. In life, we thank you for your Son and our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to be here. We thank you for the citizens, our staff, and everybody coming together. Dear Lord, we pray that we have open ears and minds and we can work together to incorporate all the thoughts and ideas and concerns into a document that works best for our community and our citizens. We thank you, dear Lord, for this day and all your many blessings. We ask for your guidance and direction, wisdom and mercy in all that we do may be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' holy and precious name, we pray amen. Thank you. At this time, we'll call for approval of our agenda.
I'll make a motion that the agenda be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, I introduce Ms. Lisa Lattin, the regular plan of Jasper County.
Good evening. Um, I would like to introduce Tara Hayes, who's our planning and zoning coordinator. Um, in case you don't know, I'm the director of planning and building services. And to my right is Ms. Denise Lebowski with Symbiosity. She's the consultant working with Jasper County on this project. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background information. Jasper County is under pressure for development. According to the 2024 census report, Jasper County is the fastest growing county in South Carolina. However, most areas of Jasper County do not have the infrastructure such as roads, sewer, and water to support the development. In 2022, Jasper received a development application, which caused concerns among many property owners and citizens due to this concerns over rapid development and impacts to critical natural resources. The Broad River Task Force was set up to study the conservation and development potential of the U-Haul Broad River Planning Area. After the findings and recommendations, the county council, a temporary moratorium was put in place to allow staff time to review the comprehensive plan and implement needed changes to the county zoning ordinance and land development regulations, which is where we are today and why we're here tonight. The county zoning ordinance is seventeen years old, and it does not adequately address the growth pressures we are facing today. The U-Haul Broad River Planning Area is unique due to its location within the Broad River watershed, immediate proximity to the Broad River and marshes, and the rich area of the area, including significant water sites. This area also does not have water. It does not have public water or sewer services available. Jasper Water Sewer Authority nor the Tallinn Fridgeland have the means currently to provide sewer to this area. While Jasper County is concerned about the impact that new subdivisions, commercial and residential development will have on road infrastructure, stormwater, open space, natural habitats, and quality of life, Jasper County also has an obligation to its citizens to engage in a continuing planning program for the physical, social, and economic growth, development, redevelopment of the area within its authority to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, prosperity, and the general welfare. Oh, okay. Prosperity and the general welfare, as well as the efficiency and economy of this area of concern. Hearing from the public is very important to us, so we thank you for your comments. We are already drafting revisions based on comments and suggestions we've received so far, and we intend to present some revisions to county council for consideration. Some revisions we are considering include increasing the density of family estate standards in the RP-10 district, modification to proposed septic tank standards, modifications to the rural lots, the rural small lot subdivision design alternatives, reviewing the proposed revisions to avoid significant changes for current residents.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dean Moss, who's the chairman of the board for the Port Royal Sound Foundation. Mr. Moss, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome everyone to the Port Royal Sound Foundation. This is a new building, ruggedly new, and for those who that have not been in it before, it is available for all kinds of uses, and it gives you the ability that we're going to do tonight is to look out at the thing that we are devoted to, which is the Port Royal Sound. Members of council, thank you for meeting here. We're a regional organization, and there are four counties in the Port Royal Sound watershed. Jasper County embraces the sound and is key to its protection. Thirty percent of the watershed is in Jasper County. As goes Jasper County, goes Port Royal Sound. Port Royal Sound's mission is to protect the sound. We're honored that you've chosen to come here this evening to work on this critical issue. The mission of the Port Royal Sound Foundation is the protection of the sound through education, research, and conservation. Thousands of kids from both counties come to school visits and camps here each year. We do many adult programs as well. For research, we're collecting and organizing all the water quality data collected over the years by all the federal, state, local agencies and groups. Then, asking the question, what do we need to know next? We're annually funding research and will continue to do so. From a conservation standpoint, we're asking questions, providing information to decision-makers, supporting agencies, and helping people make the right decisions. The protection of the sound means the protection of its water quality, of its wildlife, fish, birds, turtles, et cetera, and the inhabitants, the folks that live in this watershed. The sound is a dynamic place. The tides, they're the highest in the state, flow in and out, covering and uncovering thousands of acres of marsh and land twice a day. The fish are constantly moving in and out, different fish depending on the time of the year. Salt water and freshwater mix all the time, with the location depending on the tides and the rainfall. The water quality of the sound is the most important factor in its health. This is one of the cleanest estuaries on the east coast of the United States, particularly those parts of north of Highway 170, everything in the north that way. The principal reason for this is that most of the coastline in the watershed, in the upper watershed, is empty. No industry, no large developments. The watershed above in Hampton and Allen Dill Counties is mostly empty as well. Urban development will negatively affect water quality. The greater the density, the greater the impact. Runoff from developed property will contain non-natural materials, road waste, fertilizers, and those will decrease water quality. Stormwater runoff, particularly from paved roads, will inevitably occur, and it has to go somewhere. It contains all kinds of bad stuff. Unless lots are large enough and the soil is receptive, sewage will need to be collected, treated, and carefully disposed of somewhere. Septic tanks on small individual lots will inevitably fail, impacting the ground. Okay, I got it. It's back. It's back. We can prevent the deterioration of water quality from overdevelopment in several ways. First, use your power as using your power as county government to plan for the preservation of the region's environmental and environment, and adopt rational regulations such as the zoning ordinances and changes you're considering now. Ensure that the development does place is planned and constructed in a careful manner designed to protect the environment. Buy the land and preserve it or sell it for development in very large lots. Gregory Neck is a perfect example of how that happens. Or buy conservation easements that will limit future development. Beaufort County is doing a lot of that in its area right now. All of those strategies are being performed in pursuit in the watershed. What you're proposing to do in this situation is correct and important. A lot of council of staff thinking and hard work has gone into this proposed change. We fully support your proposed actions. Please enact this important change to the Jasper County ordinances, the Port Royal Sound, the county, and the region will be better off for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As Lisa mentioned earlier, as Lisa mentioned earlier, there are. We're taking all comments that we've had in our past workshops, which we're going to continue to have more workshops. As well as public hearings in Jasper County, for the community to come together, we take your comments and put those together with staff and review them to try to get this finished product where it's suitable to everyone in our community. We certainly are very sensitive to property owner rights. I personally, the intent in my mind was for this effort to address large-scale development, not family-owned property, heirs' property, et cetera. I don't personally think that should be included in this at all. So this is a work in progress. We're trying to get it right. None of us, especially me, are professionals when it comes to this up here, and we're looking for our community to provide input, the consultant staff, and other experts to help us formulate a plan that is a good, solid plan for the county and also the residents. I would like to, at this time, have Mr. Tetter go over the public comment times and guidelines, and once that is done, we will start the public hearing.
Can y'all hear me? First of all, welcome. Thank you. I'm David Tetter, the county attorney. I've worked with staff and the council to try and bring forward something for y'all to give us comment on tonight. As a matter of course, before I get into the rules for comment, I'm going to tell you what we're here to comment on, which is the title that was addressed on the agenda, so you know the items that we're talking about. And this is the public hearing only. No action is to be taken tonight for an ordinance to amend the Jasper County zoning ordinance, Article Five of the zoning district regulations, to add two new primary zoning districts, rural preservation ten, RP-ten, and village commercial, or VC. One new overlay district, the U-Haul overlay district. The U-Haul overlay district, or the EOD, to amend Article Six, the use regulations, to add uses for the RP-ten and VC zoning districts. Amend Article Seven, primary districts, to add lot size, lot width, setback requirements for RP-ten and VC zoning districts. To amend the lot width requirements in the residential, community commercial, general commercial, industrial development, and mixed-use business zoning districts. To the amend or impair buffer, amend riparian buffer requirements. Add design standards for the village commercial zoning district. Amend Article Eight, special perfect districts, to add design standards and requirements for the U-Haul overlay district. Article eleven, conditional use review and regulations, to add conditions for certain uses. Amend Article fifteen, the sign regulations, to add standards for the RP-ten and VC districts. Amend Article twenty-two, rural small lot subdivisions, to provide for alternative standards for subdivisions. Amend the Jasper County official zoning map to rezone some properties within the U-Haul Broad River Planning Area to the rural preservation ten zoning district and the village commercial zoning district, invoking the pending ordinance doctrine and other matters related thereto. The rules that the council has adopted for public hearings in general, I'll read to you now, they're part of what your sign-up sheet is. But generally, there's thirty minutes allocated during our normal council meetings for public hearing. The council's going to expand that to an hour, given the number of folks that have signed up. Each speaker's allotted three minutes. Speakers may not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking times to another person. You can sign on a list which you have, which includes the name, address, and address, and the purpose for which you're seeking. Public hearing comments should be directed to the county council as a whole and not to any specific member thereof. Speakers should confine their comments to items within jurisdiction of the county and not use the public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, or candidates for public office. Again, council does not take action based on public hearing comments as the meeting. The council doesn't take action generally, except our council meetings. The chairman may direct the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. Please be mindful and respectful of all those participating and are present at the meeting. Speakers are to be civil in the language. They'll refrain from commoner behavior that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene language, or disruptive actions. Again, please, if you see someone that's already addressed your concerns, if you could just address your public comments by saying, "I agree with that," so that all those that are here can have an opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have first, Ms. Patricia Dupont.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Patricia Higgs-Dupont, a resident of Jasper County, ancestors many centuries here in the Low Country. I do applaud and appreciate what was stated as relate to Port Royal Sounds. We need to protect and preserve Jasper County, historical and beautiful, beautiful landscape. Also, our concern is the Chelsea, keep Chelsea rule is very important, but keep the African-American Gullah Geechee history in the U-Haul district is also very important. People are willing to come and to be in the gateway of the Low Country for its beauty, its history, its legacy, its wildlife. Churches in the corridor of 462 could be eliminated, and that's over four hundred years of history. As we have been stated through the council, the water table is not drinkable through dehick. So that means that the soup, that the seafood is possibly unedible. The wildlife are being killed on highways and causing accidents. Let us concentrate heavily on not making one particular area so heavily populated, so that it will not put a super strain on one area, and there are all other areas that have little or no development. Again, I thank the council for everything it's done. I've given you a phone call to say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity of living in Jasper County, and the goal is, how can we not rape the county if you look out there and see how beautiful it is? How can we not lose that and still grow? Thank you so much.
Next, we have Reverend Allen Galloay.
Thank you, council members, for permitting me to speak on this afternoon. I'm on Highway 462 immediately, exit twenty-eight. I own a funeral home there. The zoning is only in front of my funeral home building, the village commercial. On the left of me is my home, on the right of me is another resident family, but only in front of my funeral home is that they want to rezone, and it's not adjacent to anywhere, probably across the street, it's right next door. It appears that they want to restrict what I can do with my business. I want to build a garage to help my vehicles, and I'm told that I will not be able to do that if the system is changed. Also in the system, the crematories will not be allowed. I own a crematory. I put my crematory up about a year ago. I've had ten different inspections to come through. Dehick came unannounced over four times. The funeral board has come, Jasper County, fire department, everyone's been over the time to put me out of business, and I'm concerned about that. So I ask that you do not rezone just spots, as spot zoning. Spot zoning should be illegal. If you spot zone my property and not ones on the left or to the right, you're picking on me, and I don't think you intended to do that. Just happened to be the way that it's been selected. The sign is right in front of my driveway that you want to rezone my property. I ask you, please reconsider that, because that's not fair. Other people not being rezoned in that area, just my funeral home from I-95, I'm the only business there, and for up to design church, I'm the only business, and you're trying to put me out of business. I ask you, please reconsider that, because I think it's unfair. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Mr. Harry Harper.
Good afternoon. I've lived in Jasper.
I've lived in Jasper County over 70 years. Where I live at right now, I used to live at Piersburg, where I live at right now is up at Magic Point. For you people that don't know, D.R. Horton is building four houses per acre. And they got, I don't know how many hundreds of acres that they're going to develop. And all of that dumps into the Tullafeney River, what dumps into the Broad River. What's going on in the county? I hope the council, it appears they're trying to get a handle on it, but they don't, ain't none of us going to be left. My race is run. I'm in my service. But my children and grandchildren, and y'all's children and grandchildren, is who's going to be him left with this mess. So I hope the council can come to an agreement about everything, and we can do something to move forward to protect the original people of this county. Y'all have a great night. Thank you.
Next, we have Caleb Romans.
All the way from the back. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Caleb Romans. I'm the stewardship director at the Open Land Trust. We have been supporters of this county council's decision to give specific attention to property in the Broad River Corridor, beginning two or three years ago, when an inappropriate development proposal for Chelsea came before you. I used to work on Chelsea under the previous ownership and can honestly say that's one of the most incredible properties around. Just upstream from here is where it is, where we're so fortunate in Jasper County. We have a whole landscape of incredible properties, habitat that is some of the best in the country, healthy forests that need fire to burn and grow, and miles and miles of salt marshes and shoreline. Your recent development moratorium gave this county a chance to pause and figure out what development in this area should look like before the developers decide for us. That's still the goal, is to help the community guide development, not developers guiding them. This county is growing quickly, and development pressure is felt almost everywhere. The proposed rural preservation 10 zoning helps expand protections for rural property owners to keep their land in forestry, agriculture, or as horse pastures, and not feel the pressure to sell to developers for 55-plus gated communities, residential or commercial development. It's not perfect, and we support RP 10 and continue refinements to the family estate regulations, so that families who have lived in this county for generations can enjoy it for generations more. I'd also like to commend the council for giving the citizens a chance to support funding for land protection. On the ballot this November, we hope Jasper County citizens will take this opportunity and vote for the penny sales tax, which will raise money for land conservation in this corridor. This will help provide some financial opportunities for landowners and conservation partners like the Open Land Trust, DNR, the Nature Conservancy, and the Marine Corps, who already have projects in this corridor, as well as others to protect most of the important properties first. Zoning alone can only do so much, and we hope all voters will vote yes for the penny sales tax and help protect these special places forever, for future generations, like my little man in the back. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have Ms. Kathy DeCorsey. So, Ms. Kathy, you can't hit that.
Good evening, chairman, council members, attendees. My name is Kathy DeCorsey. The Yuhaw overlay district is a very important asset to the Jasper County zoning regulations. It protects our waterways that are essential to ancestral families such as Hayward, the Hayward Rice Dynasty, the Huganans, the Huganans who came out of Piersburg, the Wall family. We also have many assets here that we are not utilizing, which is the Honey Hill Battlefield, Old House, and Cusahatchee. These are all tourist destinations that have not been promoted, that we can use to offset some of the expenses of keeping developers out. In a recent article this morning, I read about the importance of estuaries in the coast are favorite destinations for American travelers with more than 180 million people visiting the coast each year. Tourism and recreation alone contribute $143 billion to the national economy. Estuaries protect against climate change when flooding occurs. Estuaries absorb excess water before it reaches our communities. Estuaries provide critical habitat. This morning, I'm not fortunate enough to live on the Yuhaw Creek, but I did have an opportunity to sit out on the back porch of somebody's house this morning, and when I looked out across to, trying to think of what I was going to say tonight, there was beautiful white eaglet sitting in the trees across the creek over our good hope. There was a blue heron sitting on a pylon, just sitting there sunbathing, and a dolphin was coming in with the tide. We cannot destroy this. We need to protect this. And it's not the ancestral lands that are the problem, it's the developers that want to come in. So I urge you to vote for the RP 10 village commercial and to protect our properties. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Milton Woods.
Thank you, chairman, and our planning commission for all your hard work and effort that you've put in to protect what we love so much in this county. Forestry and agriculture are the backbones of the state natural resource economy. I want to say that again for the people that are here. The Forestry and Agriculture Commission is the backbone of our economy in South Carolina. It generates more tax revenue and source of income than anything else in this state. And it just didn't happen last year, it's been happening for years and years. But development will reduce the opportunity for us to grow that industry. We stand before you asking for help this afternoon to protect what I grew up with as a child in this very river right here, and Hazard Creek, and Red Bluff, when it was nothing but a barren island, and other islands that we used to play in as pirates on the island. I have fond memories. My children got educated, but they came back home because they loved the Low Country. They dedicated their life to the agricultural industry in this county and the Low Country. Jasper County and our larger region has played such an important role to this agricultural and timber industry. Statewide, forestry creates 75,222 jobs and $19.8 billion. Yes, I said $19.8 billion to our economy. Combined with agriculture, to represent agro-business, the two contribute $42 billion to our state economy. Forty-two billion. No other industry, the automotive, the shipping, no other industry contributes that amount to our economy. It provides over 200,000 jobs. In Jasper County, there are 135 farms, 94 of them being family farms. In Jasper County, it is far better to grow proverbial trees than houses. Trees than houses. Trees don't require shares departments, EMS, garbage pickup. Houses require all of these, as well as law enforcement and other initiatives. Thank you for your time, and please vote to support this new comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Russell Fredrick.
Thank you. Thank you to council, and thank you to the Jasper County staff who've been working so hard on the Yuhaw overlay district. I just have a couple of brief comments to make. It's no surprise that we have a public safety crisis on our hands with transportation. Our roads are more and more dangerous every day. There's no doubt this drive down 170, we just had a new traffic light added over here at Oakatee, where there's tens of thousands of homes being built by developers. Argent Boulevard, they're trying to wind the road, it's made no difference. We are being swamped by development and overdevelopment. Developers will use key phrases like conservation subdivisions, cluster housing. That doesn't reduce development. A few research conservation subdivisions, which some developers may propose, it's the same number of vehicles, the same number of homes. We are being swallowed up. The Yuhaw district, as we look out here today, it's such a perfect place for this meeting. We need to preserve what we have. We all love Jasper County so much. We will lose it if we continue to be overrun by development. Our roadways are overcrowded, our roadways are disrepaired. We need a regional growth plan in coordination with Bridgeland and Hardyville. Hardyville keeps on expanding. We have the I-95 expansion coming up, we have Exit 3. We have so much on the plate. Once I-95 goes under construction, 462 will be overwhelmed by traffic, as it is already. We need to do something, and I applaud this council for taking the stand that it has. Do not reduce RP 10, as it's been proposed by some, to RP 5. This will only invite more development. Those tracks of RP 5 will be further reduced beyond that. We will no longer recognize what we have in this very precious resource. We know that if Jasper is overwhelmed, does not have the infrastructure. We don't have the stormwater in place. With more development, we will have more roads. We need to do something. We've been plagued by annexation requests, particularly into the town of Bridgeland by some developers. We hope that these zoning changes will, along with a regional growth plan, to support those efforts. In closing, again, I applaud council's efforts and encourage you to continue your strides and vote for RP 10, and don't move off that mark. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Mr. Reginald White.
I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today. My speech goals, my roots run deep. My great-great-grandfather, Anderson White, mustered out of the Army, April 25, 1866, Company K, 21st USC colored troops. He fought for the land that we once was a slave on. Exactly today, 20 years later, after the war ended, that's April 9, 1885, four families collaborated to get together to purchase hundreds of acres of property that is now known as Cherry Hill. April 19, 1904, the land was legally owned by those four families. That's 120 years ago. We paid taxes the whole time. This was before Jasper County was established, January of 1912. So this is older than Jasper County. From my great-great-grandfather, Isaac Cuthbert, who was one of the four families nine generations later, I am concerned about your decision. The council promised estate exemptions. We have promises before, like the landfill and the concrete facility. This isn't just where my family and I stay. This is my home, my heritage, my legacy, and my family history. Let your conscience rest on the words that I speak to you tonight. Please consider protecting heirs property and what we can do with it, because we have been stewards of the land for over 120-plus years, and we would like to continue to do that. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Grant McClure.
Hello. My name is Grant McClure. I work for the Coastal Conservation League, and we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and our expertise is environmental advocacy. So we work to protect the quality of life and the natural resources of communities along South Carolina's coastal plain. I just wanted to kind of preface by saying that we are at a pivotable, a very pivotal moment for the future of Jasper County. We stand on the precipice of, you know, either being swallowed by development or retaining what makes this area so special. And so, yeah, there is a vision for the county, and that vision is starting to come together, I think. So you may, as you may know, there's a referendum that's coming up in November that would, if approved by voters, set aside $94 million for conservation projects. These could be conservation easements, it could be fee simple purchases for things like parks. And there is also a Parks and Recreation Master Planning effort that is kicking off in October. And all of this is complementary to these zoning code changes that is before, that are before the council now, because we know that strong, robust rural zoning is complementary to conservation solutions. And so we are very much in favor of rezoning to the RP 10 and the village commercial, and we want to work with the council to figure out solutions for things like family properties and heirs property. We believe that there are tools that already exist within the county's code that could be updated to provide some relief for those historic property owners. Additionally, I did want to share that regarding the rural small lot subdivisions, they're, at least in Charleston County, they recently removed that from their comprehensive plan. They found that developers were kind of taking advantage of that. So just something to consider, that open space that was supposed to be set aside was not necessarily being stewarded and was unfortunately developed, I think, was kind of the problem that they were running into. Finally, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I know that you all will make an informed decision, and appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Rhodes.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Ashley Rhodes. I am also a ninth-generation Jasper County native, and I have worked in the conservation community for the past decade. Tonight, I am standing before you on behalf of the Keep Chelsea Rural I am also a ninth-generation Jasper County native, and I have worked in the conservation community for the past decade. Tonight, I am standing before you on behalf of the Keep Chelsea Rural Steering Committee. As Jasper County moves toward a final version of the U-Haul Overlay District rezoning paperwork, we feel it is prudent to remind you and the community why Keep Chelsea Rural and the conservation community supports rezoning of this area. Our focus and impetus have always been to protect our water quality and our community, for our community and by our community. Our objective is to also preserve the rural way of life, including the right to farm, have horses, preserve historic resources, et cetera. Therefore, before this reaches its final version, we would like to share our thoughts. Some of this you have already heard this evening, but first, we fully support modifications to the family estate exemption, language that would allow families to continue to grow on their ancestral land and build homes for family members who would like to do the same. This can be accomplished through improvements to the current family estate language. Secondly, we do not support reducing RP-10 to RP-5, as suggested by the planning commission, because what that invites? Our national home builders and developers to come in and manipulate the rural landscape. It sends a signal that we are willing to slice up the entire area into five-piece parcels, and that is why prices are increasing. That is why it's hard to find open space, and that is why developers can come in and ask for PDDs. Instead, RP-10 protects the current and future rural land uses. Local families are not manipulating the system. Some new landowners and developers are manipulating the system. Lastly, we have reviewed the pros and cons of the small lot subdivision. Thank you. We understand it, and we do not feel that this should be an option offered. Our hope is that through the remainder of this process, that the county can come to a reasonable place with all language and zoning to allow for Jasper County to remain in a state that has been responsibly planned and where shared natural resources have been preserved. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Smitty Cooley.
Mr. Chairman, council members, staff. In May of 2023, the Broad River Task Force and Keep Chelsea Rural asked this council to establish a cultural protection overlay for the designated U-Haul district area. They asked you to pump the brakes on large developer proposals and upzoning requests to allow for a period of study and reassessment. We asked you to reevaluate zoning designations to discourage shopping by developers to municipalities, to provide staff with the best tools and resources available to properly vet development proposals and assessing upzoning requests, and develop a regional growth plan in concert with Ridgeland and Hardyville to guide growth. Later that same month, May of 2023, you took action to pass an ordinance to establish a moratorium period to study these issues and to begin the process of updating the comprehensive plan. In this ordinance, you officially expressed your concerns over the impact of new commercial and residential development on our infrastructure, evacuation routes, streetscapes, traffic congestion, stormwater, open space, natural habitats, and the quality of life in this area of Jasper County. After more than a year and a half of consideration, study, and public input, we strongly request that you finish this. Bring this in for a landing. Finalize a new base zoning designation, known as Rural Preservation 10 and Village Commercial, to solidify the protection of the irreplaceable natural and cultural assets of the U-Haul district. But in doing so, we strongly encourage you as well to exempt family estates from any impact they might be incurred through these zoning changes. These longtime family residents are the best custodians of this area that we have. We greatly appreciate your efforts and consideration. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Ada Dixon. Ms. Dixon? Ada Dixon? Next, we have Mr. Richard Arzillo.
Good evening. My name is Richard Arzillo. I've lived here for 54 years. You can take a boat right there and go straight to my house. I know every hole in that river, and anybody that knows me knows how much I love this river. I wrote two books on this. One, and this is a very hard decision for you guys, if I was sitting where you were, it would be very hard. I could keep my mouth shut. I have no intention of building on my property anymore. This would fall right up my alley. The problem is, I've got USA behind my address. I would like to see this happen in a way that we are not putting language in that says, correct me if I'm wrong, but RP-10 would say, if I have 10 acres, if I give half of it up minus wetlands, you'll grant me the privilege to build another house. That, to me, is extremely offensive. I like where we're going. I don't like the view. I think that this board, if you have enough power to tell me that, you also have enough power to point those sites where it belongs and take care of the problem head-on. Very few, how many permits were issued by private citizens last year in Jasper County to build houses? Maybe the number's 200. How many of these big developments did the same thing? A whole lot. Let's address the problem head-on for what it is, and let's not trample the rights of individuals. Like I said, nobody loves this place more than me. Anybody that knows me knows this. But remember, let's weigh this properly. Let's make sure that we're not trampling individual rights. If you've got the power to do that to me, I think you've got the power to stop what we're wanting to stop. I can, we can all agree that we don't want this to look like summer build or Bluffton or whatever right here. We know that. But let's do it in a way, let's try, if we can, because I want this done, and I want, but I want it done right. So please, listen to what I'm saying and protect the individual here. These people that have been here forever, their daughter might want to buy a house. We can't say you're going to have to buy a house at build-out prices today, and let's just call it $250,000. And oh, by the way, you've got to spend, you've got to buy 10 acres on top of that. And then to go a step further to say, well, we don't want settling tanks, you need a grinding station, it's $35,000 plus impact fees, and then when his sister does, builds another house there on an acre, well, you can't tie in there. You've got, we need to be real careful about all this regulation that we're dumping on the individual, because it appears to me that we're dumping all this regulation to make it the American dream that we have saw, private homeownership, that can very easily go away real fast with all this regulation that's coming our way. That would only put us where? And all these, our children will have to go to these complexes there to be and build out 6,000 here, 6,000 there. They're going to have to rent for the rest of their life. And the number one thing that we can leave our children is our land and our home. These people will not, they will be renting, they will never be putting money into a home. They'll never get a home paid for. They'll rent forever, and I hope that's not the plan, but y'all, open your eyes, okay? Let's do this right. Let's get it done. I want it done, but let's do it the right way. Let's not be, let's not pick a way and go that way. Don't let, don't let's pick a good way, let's pick the best way. That's all I want. And trust me, I know how hard this is going to be, because like I said, I went both ways on this. I still can't make up my mind which is right, but I do know what I want here, but let's just do it right. I just encourage you to do that.
Ms. Lori Blackman?
Can you hear me? I sent the county council each a letter because I didn't want to take up too much time today. We have a property, I'm speaking on behalf of Aqua Blue Pools, my name is Lori Blackman. We have a property on Low Country Highway that is being downzoned to village commercial. We purchased the property in March of '23 to put another one of our, to put another pool company. We have one in Bluffton, it wasn't quite, lost me, oh, there we go, didn't have quite enough space. So we bought this rural property in hopes to build. We have already built, we've already gone through planning, we've already gotten our surveyors in there, we've spent well over $300,000 in our hopes to get this building up when all of a sudden we found out there was a moratorium effect. So we've kind of had to halt everything. We hope that you would consider this piece of property to remain community commercial. We understand what's going on in the county, and I couldn't agree more with the conservation efforts, because I love this place as much as anybody. But this one rural piece of property is very important to us, and we've spent a lot of money. So I hope that you'll consider it. I hope that you received my letter. You did? Okay. It had our zoning certification, and it had the front elevating. We're aiming to make the building Low Country beautiful so that it fits into the environment. So I'm just asking that you consider this, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Joseph Arzillo.
Thank you for letting me speak. Everybody's for this river and everything we're talking about. I hope you can hear me. You know, we've had consultants here, most, everybody we talk to or heard from are consultants. I've tried to get a lot of answers, nobody's got all the answers. We know that there are people that are going to be adversely affected by this. You might not hear from them tonight, but they are. If you just read everything in it, they're concerned. And just because they're not here doesn't mean that they're not valid and they do have representation. That's y'all. The council represents the people, the people vote them in, and we have consultants here that represent, you know, and some of them are hired by the county, and everything they're saying sounds real good. But dig into it real deep and make sure that we're doing the right thing. Make sure that what we're trying to get accomplished gets accomplished. Understand that anything we do as a council can be taken away by Hardyville or Ridgeland through annexation. The people who are going to be stuck are the people who are adversely affected on a small level, the small person, the person who's not going to be able to go hire a lawyer who's going to be affected by this, and they will. And I'm not saying which way this thing needs to go, but I will say there are some concerns that I do not hear here tonight. I hear a consultant or someone who says this has been done somewhere else. We don't like the five-acre thing. We recommend 10 acres. We've had things in there that helped this small person, the, for family, whatever, and that was removed in other places. And that's how it typically works. We come in with these big things, and we try to make concessions, and then after we get the big things, we kind of work on those concessions and get those out the way. That's what I see. I might be wrong. I've got a lot of questions. I want to know exactly what's in this and make sure that the concerns are addressed as best I can. County council has the ability to prevent any of this problem we have, which is overdevelopment, too many cars on the road. We can talk about the river, but remember, this is one-third of the camp, roughly. Y'all know the numbers, but roughly one-third. We're not talking about Chelsea, we're not talking about bowling hall, we're talking about one-third of the camp. Now, we can use Chelsea because we can use the river, and we can say, well, we're going to try to protect that, but we're going to waive you on that. One-third of the camp. How many people is that? 3,000? Y'all know the numbers. And that's all I'm asking. Slow down with this, and let's make sure we have thorough discussion on this, because just because they're not out here telling you, because everybody here is in agreement for this, and why wouldn't you be? I'm for agreement with that, everything we're talking about. But I'm also saying you have not heard all the concerns, and you know that whatever you signed today or make-pass in can be changed later incrementally, and that's how it works. So take that into consideration, slow this thing down, and hopefully after the new year, there'll be a decision on it. I think anything before then is a little futile, especially with an election coming up, and everybody should have an opportunity to get their voice in. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Bert Schiffle.
Thank you for letting us all speak. But anyway, basically, one of the things I'd like to point out that I did not see on the website was a map. So I think it'd be very helpful for everyone to have access to a map of all the area that's affected by this zoning ordinance. Very helpful. The second thing that I would like to say is that if you look at our history, I'm representing Okatee Club, founded in 1894, long considered to be one of the most, one of the original conservation organizations in the entire country, much less this county. We've been here for this long, and everyone can, you know, look and see the results are there. The proof is there of what we've done conservation-wise, and we've been well-regarded in that aspect. The thing is, is that even though we have, we have a 50-year plan, and within our 50-year plans, we have zero development plans within that. We don't have any. But I want you to consider this. A change in this zoning ordinance, even that we're talking about today, restricts my options, okay? With the way we've gone up, we've gone to 50% of our properties in wetlands, another portion is affected, over 10,000 acres is affected by a dangerous species that we maintain the full cost of burying that cost. And so we would like you to consider that there are pressures on people, and you're reducing options that they have for survival. And that survival, I repeat, is very important, okay? I see a number of flag, red flags in this ordinance and some of the restrictions that are given within it. And within those red flags, it gives me, like it's been stated here tonight, we have great, you know, it plays to great importance on proceeding with caution, and we encourage you to proceed slowly, and we encourage you to proceed, taking in as much information from the citizens that are here. This ordinance will affect lives, just like the lady that spoke, okay? And anyway, within this ordinance, consider the citizens as well, consider, as you consider the land. Just please ask it, consider, you know, proceeding with caution. Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Graves.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council staff members. I come every day as a priver. I've been on horseback all my life, never been bucked off. Been catching blue marlin out in the ocean out there with big, never been punctured, bulls and all that, but I was on a bike and fell off, and that got me with the hip, so I apologize. I'm a crafty guy, I'm a bit of this. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, I've been here a long time, this next birthday, I'll be 87. I've born in Raisin, so I've been around Jasper County a long time. Worked a lot of people in my career out of Jasper, Raisin, and Hardyville. I came up mostly on, in Bluffton Hilton Head, and came up under the tutelage of Charles Fraser and mentored me. But today I come to you as a property owner in Jasper County. Over the past few years, I've purchased about 1,500 acres in the county, Jasper County. Over the past few years, I purchased about 1,500 acres in the county, Jasper County. All of you know that we're deeply engaged with the town of Raisland Fanexation, rezoning and development agreements on these properties. And I do believe in the balance of ecology, life, wildlife and development, there's a balance there, we just got to find it. The county proposed downzoning would cost property owners, fellow property owners. And it would also cost the county a lot of money with revenue and lost money solely needed for schools, hospitals, qualitative life and service for the citizen residents of that county, kind of outside right now as I see it. I'll wrap up now, but if you're going to put one, I'm shaking, but if you put, if you put one house per 10 acres, at least consider maybe cluster. The infrastructure cost of something like that's a lot more efficient. And it gives you a lot more open space, including the wetlands. Seem to me like, I think some people already addressed it, but our wetlands are very important to us, that's a big habitat, I've heard a phone talk about it. A little closer, okay. But habitat, I believe in, and it provides not only for all the creatures and wildlife and everything, but aquifers, it protects aqua, drinking water. So I would hope that you would give credit for wetlands, not take them away from the land, I just bought this land, they didn't give me any discount for wetlands and I was okay. But I think it would be more balanced and fair that if we had some kind of a balance You know, the picture rest of 462, I wish it was that way, but the clerk cut all the way to close the hatchet now. Say for the picture rest side of Old Field, having horses that I did at Pepper Hall, people loved, okay? Seeing horses and animals on that highway out there. I got some various part of land planners back there and I would be happy if you'd listen to them and they'll introduce themselves, I got a guy, I'm happy.
Next is Dan Kiefer.
My name's Dan Kiefer, local land planner, landscape architect. Appreciate everybody's time tonight. I wanted to go through a couple items, more details and propose changes to talk through some, some of the options we're looking at and appreciate Lisa's time over the last few months accepting our phone calls. So one of the impacts of downzoning from, from RP to RP10 is the significant reduction of lot, the increase of lots from one acre to 10-acre lot size. Those impacts are, may create hardships for family-owned properties and in particular, we're concerned about not only properties that have been owned for generations, the properties that have been bought over the last 30 years are impacted by that throughout the U-Haul district. 10-acre lots, we've looked at several properties and the impacts of subdividing 10-acre lots and some of the concerns are the 10-acre lots would bisect wetlands and critical nature corridors versus having a planned approach to preservation of properties. 10 acres is a big landmass to work with. There's also significant cost implications to develop and maintain 10-acre parcels versus providing attainable housing solutions. So we think that looking at this as far as 10 acres and how we've mentioned some attainable housing methods is very important. We didn't, we didn't really see that in the updates, we thought that would be important for everybody to look at. The rural subdivision, we think that's a good starting point for where it's at, but in terms of preservation options, the one-acre lots versus a smaller half-acre lot, there are other ways to preserve larger tracts and conserve the development. So we're looking to minimize that number a little bit. As far as the buffers, I think we didn't really hear anything about the buffers this evening, but one thing that's in the current ordinance is the, is the ability to provide average buffers so their properties have natural resources, trees, vegetation, drainage ways. The average buffer is a tool for a planner to work with the existing conditions. So that's currently not outlined in the U-Haul district code, it may just be a typo, but just wanted to bring that up as something that can be very helpful in terms of preservation. The, in terms of rural subdivisions, allowing, it's not really clear on the open space, but allowing open space to occur on lots, we understand there'll be requirements for that, but to allow open space on those lots, it's something we would like for this council to consider. One additional item is the parcel, there's a parcel, and we talked to Lisa about this, at the intersection of 462 and Bull and Hall Road, on the existing or the current Jasper County zoning map, it's zoned community commercial. It's adjacent to the Aqua Blue site and on the comparison of the current versus proposed is shown as RP. So that's something we, we wanted to keep that land as community commercial. So Lisa, I'll send you a copy of this or I can give this to you now, it's the land we talked about. And the last item is septic in regards to the 2,000 linear feet for the engineered systems. We just don't, we're not sure of some of the details of that, particularly for single-family residential and engineered system, that's a common practice. So it's just more of a detail we would like to work with staff and consultants on. Can I give this to Lisa?
Next we have William Eubanks.
Good evening, I'm Bill Eubanks, I'm a landscape architect and planner. Some of you might not be aware of this, but the Open Land Trust of Beaufort County, next month in Washington DC, will receive the Award of Excellence from the American Society of Landscape Architects, something that we should be very proud of. And I'm very proud to say that I wrote one of the four support letters for them to get that award. And I've served on the board of a land trust myself, so I understand conservation. I also understand the needs of accommodating growth in a community. I wrote a letter to Lisa a few weeks ago and I asked that that letter be distributed to y'all, I hope that y'all have received that letter. But I'd like to go over some points that I think need to be looked at as far as the ordinance. So one is the idea of basing the density on the gross acreage, not the base site area. Any parcel of any size, and I mean, this is the Low Country, any parcel of any size is, is going to have wetlands and it doesn't seem equitable to me to penalize a landowner for having and saving wetlands. So basing the gross density, basing the density on the gross acreage would seem more fair to me. Hand in hand with that is the idea of actually including the wetlands in the open space calculations. It is in fact part of that open space and it should be included in those calculations. Also would like for y'all to consider starting with a lower baseline for the open space and actually using increased open space as an incentive through this zoning ordinance. And there have been a couple of inaccurate things that have been said this evening about concentrating or clustering development, but I think there are some, some real advantages to that as far as decreasing infrastructure, which is also decreasing impervious space, also decreasing the burden of maintenance on the county over the years. If we're able to do smaller lot sizes, not changing the density, but being able to change to smaller lot sizes and to concentrate those. And I totally agree with what Daniel said about, about buffers with average buffers and buffering from septic systems and all that. One of the things that kind of alarms me the most about this though is I'm afraid that this ordinance is going to put the cost of housing out of reach for a large segment of your county's population. And I think before you move forward with this ordinance, you need to really understand in depth the impact that this is going to have on affordability across the county. Thank you.
Next is Nicole Scott.
Good afternoon, members of council and others that are here tonight. I wanted to just pick up on Dean Moss's comments about what a beautiful, loud voice, that this tends to scare people when I'm on a microphone. As I was saying, I just want to echo Dean Moss's comments about what a beautiful sight this is, to look at while we're sitting here speaking. And I think the irony of it is, is this couldn't be built in the overlay district because of the regulations that are being proposed, but it is, it is a beautiful setting. I'm here speaking on behalf of some property owners in the district and I echo a lot of the sentiments that were already said tonight, and so I don't want to go over those again, particularly with Mr. Eubanks's comments and Mr. Kiefer's comments, I think those are some very thoughtful comments that need to be considered, as well as some of the comments from the private citizens, the small, the citizens that own the smaller acreage and what that's going to do to them. And just try to keep this brief, but the problems I have heard identified tonight are about developments with four units per acre. The current zoning does not allow four units per acre. Current zoning at a minimum are one-acre lots. So I feel that this is a huge overreaction to what may not be as big of a problem as it is being portrayed to be. Of course, we want to protect things like the sound or waterways, but the inconsistencies in the ordinance, I don't think achieve those goals. For example, the ordinance itself, the overlay district, why are we only protecting that area? Are there not other areas in Jasper County that front waterways that go into the sound that would also presumably suffer from overdevelopment if that were allowed and negatively affect these waterways and these, these resources? And looking at the proposed rezoning map, there's a widespread rezoning from rural conservation, rural preservation to rural preservation 10, yet there are large industrial sites right in the middle of the overlay district that are going to remain zoned industrial. Are we to believe that residential developments on, that consist of one-acre lots have a bigger impact than industry on the waterways? And so I join in with the others that have mentioned this tonight to say, let's, you know, let's stop and take a look at this on behalf of property owners, stop and take a look at this and really give some thought to what the effects of this proposed ordinance could be. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mr. Philip Malfris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Name is Philip Malfris, my wife and I own over 265 acres of land on the Boyd Creek side of Noz Island Road. I was born and grew up in this county. We've worked at land for many years, now it's a free farm. And our land has actually been in our family for over 60 years. It's presently in the RP zone. With the new land ordinance zones, our property will be classified as RP10. And since our property is the only section of land along the west side of the Noz Island Road that would be changed to RP10, number one, we request to remain as RP. And that would be more aligned with our family estate situation and as far as lots for children and grandchildren. So I'm here to speak up for our rights as property owners of the original Noz Island versus my dad, David Malfris, in the 60s. We are speaking tonight against a new RP10 zone because of primarily two reasons. Restricted uses allowed in RP10 that we see and a small but very significant term named density. And let me explain the effect of density. Density is used as a way to calculate a percentage of how many houses and acres you have that you can use for building homes on your property. Consider a simple 100-acre example. RP1 or RP is what we have now, rural preservation zone. Currently, the regulations today, the density is a value of one. So 100 acres, let's take that for example, 100 acres with a density of one, you still have 100% usage of your property and you could build one home per acre if you chose. RP5 is a proposed family estates exemption. The density value for that is maybe five, we're not sure of that. But again, 100 acres with a density of five equals 20% usage, or we could build 20 homes maximum based on a one home per five acre density. Jasper County controls 80% of your residential usage with RP5. Originally, this was written up with a density of 10. And then we have RP10, proposed countywide zoning for all properties currently in RP that are over 10 acres. Well, 100 acres divided by a density of 10 equals only 10% usage, or 10 homes max allowed on those 100 acres. Jasper County controls 90% of your residential usage with RP10. The newly proposed RP510=1 zoning regulations are gross overreach of power. You take away your rights to make decisions to your own property, even in emergencies or things that may come in the future. And there's no expiration, by the way, if you read this ordinance, no expiration, that's right. There's no way to ever change without a court order or having to fight the regulations in court for the rest of your life. Plus, it's not the county's property, it's our property. We're private landowners. We own that property and we ought to have the right to do with it what we want. Do we want development? No way. We don't want to develop anything on our 200 and something acres. But we feel like we have the right as private landowners to make decisions concerning our property. And if I want to give my grandchild in the future an acre of land to build her a house on the marsh edge there or whatever, it ought to be my right. You folks shouldn't have the, you shouldn't have the power to take away the things we can do with our property. If we wanted to develop our property tomorrow, I've had eight or 10 different letters come to me from, from developers from all over the state and all over the southeast wanting to buy our property. We're not interested in settlement, we're not interested in the development. So that's why we request to stay RP and you folks can make that happen if you so choose. Again, we're the only stretch of land along Noz Island Road that's, that's going to be rated as RP10. And we would appreciate your consideration of leaving this as RP like it is. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Kathy, did you want to speak? Next, Ms. Kathy, did you want to speak?
He speaks from the male perspective. Good afternoon. I'm the daughter-in-law of David and Valeria Malfris. He was a World War II veteran and a big-time farmer, and she was the former director of Jasper County Schools Finances. They married as soon as he got home from the war, and they worked very, very hard to purchase the island that you placed into a rural preservation RP 10. And we only found out about that because our older son saw a Facebook post and looked at the map. Later, on August the 11th, we received a letter that was telling us that formally. First of all, our property, which is about 265 acres, give 10 or 20, has nothing whatsoever to do with Chelsea Rural. Keep Chelsea Rural. We have absolutely no plans for development, and we've always strived to preserve this land. We love it, but we do have that God-given right to control how our land is used. Emergencies can arise in every family. And when that happens, if it should happen, God forbid to our family, under these proposed zoning ordinances, we would have to go to court and plead with the judge for the right to sell an acre of our own land to gain the funds to help a family member or whatever has happened at that point in order to provide for our family so we don't lose what we've worked so hard to maintain and preserve. If you know our pledge of allegiance, you know it ends with liberty and justice for all. Please put yourself in our places right now and consider a moment, just for a moment, where is the liberty for us as landowners directly affected? And where is the justice, is it in this zoning that seeks to control what we do with our own land? The family estate option has been discussed over and over, but it still means deeding five or even 10 acres, depending on what y'all are considering at the moment. Now, I have a brother and sister. We were raised in the upstate, but now my dad's died, and we've always talked about selling that plot of 15 acres that we have together because they want to come down here and live. But under this zoning, what would we have to do then? Five acres? 10 acres? We have these two darling granddaughters that are 16 years old. I hope one day they'll be wanting to live right there beside us. It's raining, I guess. Who among you sitting here has had to purchase that much land to build a private dwelling? The plan of RP 10 or even RP 5 puts that beyond the American dream of owning property. Deading that much land out of agricultural and into residential means heavy tax burdens for the buyer and unnecessary loss of income for us as tree farmers by reducing the acreage we have that are in trees right now. And that really is the opposite of what you would want in order to preserve the property. It will no longer be renewable for us. We can only cut it one time in that case if we've had to sell it, and no longer preserved as farming. Your zoning is penalizing the individual landowner, not a developer. A developer can afford to go to court and get zoning changed, but for many landowners, that isn't a realistic possibility. There are some that have been granted some concessions, and we think we deserve and we want to remain in the rural preservation zone instead of RP 10 or RP 5, since we've worked so hard to preserve and protect this property for over 60 years. That's just our plea to you, and please understand, again, we don't have big plans to bring in a developer. We only want to preserve this for our family, and in case of emergency down the road, maybe we do need to sell an acre, but it's not something that we plan on, but it's something we should have a right to do. Thank you.
Next is Jeff Harder. Next, we have Julia Silcox. Julia Silcox. Next, we have Brian Smith.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Council and Planning Commission. I appreciate what you guys are doing. Don't envy the position. I'm very confident that y'all are doing the right thing, that you're listening, the due diligence, listening to the people that live in the county. I grew up in the Low Country of South Carolina. I'm a dentist in Luftham and have been for quite a while, 25 years. I recently bought a piece of property directly across from Webster's Marine, and I bought it with the intention of building a dental office here. I think that sometimes things have unintended consequences, and perhaps this is one of The property that I bought was community commercial on the first 300 feet of the 170 corridor. I met with a member of the Planning Commission prior to buying it and described what I wanted to do, and was told that that would make perfect sense for the property, and I think that it does. I think that regardless of how this falls with the zoning, there are certain places and people that need professional services. And if the 170 corridor is not where you put that, I don't know where would make more sense. So I'm hoping that this was an oversight or perhaps an unintended consequence of what's going on. And I do ask for consideration for this piece of property that is directly across from Webster's Marine. The turn-in aligns with Webster's Marine's turn-in, and to me, it would be an ideal place for a dental office. I would appreciate consideration for that. Thank you for your time, and thank you for what you guys are doing. I believe that y'all will come to the right decision, and I think that what you're doing, listening to the public tonight and listening to the people, is very important in the decision that you're making, because there are sometimes unintended consequences when you're looking at a blanket thing like this. And I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Next is Don Brandt.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I came here not expecting to speak, but thankful I did because I see that what I'm about to bring forward is something that has already been discussed, and I have an advance support for what I'm about to say, because I keep hearing some of the audience saying that they are against commercialization, they are against industrialization, they are against water pollution, they are against air pollution, they are against water runoff when we have storms like we had recently, 24 to 26 inches in our place. The roads are still out and will continue to be out for some time. And all of these are negative impacts that what you're proposing, I think, will not eliminate, because I currently live in a rural preservation zone a little bit west of here outside of Gilsonville. And all of these are in place now. The negatives are impacting not only myself, but the community that lives within my throwing distance, so to speak. And what I'm suggesting and commenting about is, even though you pass the RP 10 and other rural preservation, there are overlays which the county has and the county council has which could come over and overlay on what is currently a rural preservation RP 10 and completely negate it. I keep hearing about forestry, I wear for forestry, I wear for agriculture. Well, there's something out there that call it solar farm, which I call a solar plant, because it's nothing more than the commercialization, it's nothing more than cutting trees down, which prevents carbon sequestration, which prevents the oxygen generation within our community, which also covers, what, 1,500 acres of land right at Gilsonville plus another 750 acres within two miles of me. That would be covered by these solar plants. Now, how that is protecting the wildlife, how that is protecting the water, because we considered at the planning meeting not too long ago where they were going to be using gotha, whether it's a ground up, to kill off for 30 or 35 years. How is one going to be able to return the property to agriculture use after 30 or 35 years of, for God's sake, weed-killing, chemical? So here, we are talking about leaving the property to our families, which we are. We came in as rural preservation. We want to keep it rural preservation, but we don't want to have the negative impacts of these solar plants going in, whether it's a coal plant or a nuclear plant or any other plant that produces electricity, it's still a commercial industrial operation. And we would strongly support you include in whatever you come forward with the prohibition of future solar industry within our rural preservation zones. And I thank you for your time.
Next is Kate Peabody.
My family name is Kate Rowland. I grew up in northern Beaufort County. My dad is Dr. Larry Rowland, who wrote the history of this area, three large volumes. My great aunt is Marguerite Rose, who started the Open Land Trust. She was a hero of mine and encouraged me to be the intern at the Beaufort County Planning Department about 25 years ago, when they were going through the same process. And actually, I was tasked as a college student to write the introduction to that. So while I am just an accountant now, I had to give up my dreams of being a planner, I do have a good history of the area. We've lived here for generations. My husband was actually on the board of the heirs' property under the directorship of Jenny Stevens, and so he's a professional land surveyor and was the state president recently of the Land Surveyors Society. So I'm coming to talk to you because I kind of concur with these people that are saying that, you know, it's smart to have an intelligent look at how we're going to develop, but I do feel like it's not nuanced enough the way that the plan has come about. And I think our family property is a perfect example. We've owned it for over 40 years. It's interstate property, and it's along 462, so we're at exit 28. And our letter is incorrect. It says the current zoning is rural preservation. It is not. It is village commercial, and that's because of the location on I-95 and 462. So we have at least 1,000 cars take that exit 28 every day. The best use of a property like that is to serve the community for commercial intentions and businesses and things like that. To have the proposed RP 10 on a property like that, where there's noise pollution everywhere you stand, we have, on three sides of us, we have a commercial business, a funeral home on one side, we have 462 on one and I-95 on another. So to me, that seems like it was kind of not very thought through in terms of our property. And I think that's a good example of maybe, you know, needing to go back to the drawing board and just kind of drill down on this more and get it right for everybody. We will be in the category of heirs' property in the next generation. We would have a very difficult time managing and maintaining that property with all of the grandchildren, their spouses and coming about. But we love the property. We've owned it for over 40 years, and we kick around in the woods, and I've spent probably years of my life down in the St. Helena Sound. And another thing about development is, there is such a thing as good development. I grew up in the time when Dalton Island was developed, and my dad has famously said it was the largest tax-based influx in northern Beaufort County since Paris Island. It brought so many jobs. Sorry. It brought so many jobs to northern Beaufort County, so much tax revenue that they built the St. Helena's Island Elementary School with that, and they rebuilt Ladies Island. So just some more considerations for you, and I thank you for your time.
Next is Ms. Carla Stanley.
Good evening. I think we're still on the same day. We've been here a while. If this were your property and your family, how would you feel? I just want you to consider that. I know we all love Jasper County, and we all want things to be the way they were when we grew up in the 80s, 90s, or even the 2000s. But consider, has your hairstyle changed? The flare of your jeans? The size and width of your tie? Have those all stayed the same? I quote the article, "A Past Worth Preserving." Age and experience have taught me that change is inevitable, both good and bad. All we can do is decide whether to adapt to the change or get steamrolled by the change. If we do not adapt, we will get steamrolled. I have submitted my thoughts for your consideration, like the encouragement of the conservationismists, use of the conservation tax to purchase property for open space, what this will do to property values, what this will do to property values and the mass turnover of land to developers with the time and the money to manipulate these zoning changes, and more. Please consider those. I finally ask you, the county council, to be forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes our public hearing. I want to thank everybody for coming out. We are certainly going to take all of your concerns and everything that y'all mentioned tonight into consideration, working on a plan. And as I mentioned previously, we are not in a hurry. We're trying to do our due diligence, take into consideration everybody's comments and concerns, working with staff and others to formulate a plan going forward that is sensitive to the environment, to property landowner rights, and every other aspect that we've mentioned earlier. We will be having more workshops as well as public hearings in the future. Those dates will be announced. And at this time, sir, did you...
I did sign up.
Well, I can't allow somebody to speak that hadn't already signed up, because I have to allow everybody.
I did sign up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Okay. And state your name, please, and you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, sir. My name is Barry Johnson.
My name is Barry Johnson. I'm an attorney. I grew up in Beaufort in the 50s. I represent property owners in Jasper County who have purchased about 1,500 acres or so of land in Jasper County, and they have asked me to make a few comments to you tonight. My comments are, first of all, encouraging of many people who've spoken up for private property rights. I have two basic things to tell you. One is that the notion that 10 acres per lot, per residential lot, is rationally related as a nexus to protecting the river, doesn't make any sense. You could just as well say that the minimum lot size needs to be 100 acres. There's no rational, reasonable logic to that kind of incursion into private property rights. With the current 1 acre per residential lot zoning going to 10 acres, you are proposing to reduce the utility and value of land by 90%. One or two of the speakers have spoken to that, and with the addition of the buffers and the land planners spoke to some of that, the setbacks, wherever you are with the inclusion or exclusion of weapons in calculations, that number shoots well above 90% loss of utility. So I think you've got two problems. You've got, and there are red flags, I guess, that somebody spoke about earlier. One is that the proposed ordinance is inherently arbitrary. Because it's arbitrary, it's capricious. That's a tough place for a zoning ordinance to find itself. And the second thing is that you need to look very carefully at the red flags of regulatory tactics for thousands and thousands of acres of land. I don't think that's what you intended as a consequence, but it's a serious issue, not just for my clients, but for a number of other property owners. Y'all have a very difficult job. I respect you individually and what you're doing, but I think you need, as has been suggested, slow down, take a look at what you're doing and what the consequences are, and be careful. I see something from my own experience growing up in Beaufort in the 50s, when Beaufort had a rudimentary sanitary sewer system that just flowed directly into the river without treatment. Beaufort Hospital dropped all of its medical waste directly into the river in front of the hospital. Creative people, determined people like Joe Abellin envisioned and then led to creation of what's now the Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer Authority, beginning in the early 60s. And we learned from that, the provision of water and sewer can very easily protect the rivers, but you can't pay for it without density. And so you'll never get that best solution to protecting the rivers from fecal pollution without density, and you're headed in the opposite direction. I think your goals in many ways are worthy, but this is not the right approach. Appreciate it, and thank you for considering my thoughts.
Yes, sir, thank you. Here, at this time, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. You have a second? All in favor, say aye. I thank your motion, Chair. Thank y'all, have a safe trip.